All right, good evening and welcome to our June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting. Call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one. At this time, if you please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you please remain standing. With us tonight, we have Mylon Lowe with the Bastrop First Assembly of God will offer our opening prayer this evening.
Gracious, mighty God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the safety of everyone who's here with us, Lord. And God, we just pray for the board members for spirit today, Lord, and they understand the responsibility they have in shaping the future of decisions for their students and for the families they represent, God. And Lord, I pray you would give them wisdom, give them guidance, give them direction, Lord. And God, I pray you would just use them during this time. And Lord, I pray that you would just bless the educators too who are here and those who are not here, Lord, that you would just bless them for working with our children as they help them develop and grow, Lord, and that you would just be with them as they tirelessly work for our schools. Bless the parents and the guardians, God, who we entrust their children to the system, God, that you would do the best for B I S D, Lord, and you would watch over this place, God. Let this meeting be marked by mutual compassion, thoughtful discussions, and a shared commitment to what is best for our students. May your presence guide every word spoken and every decision made. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Lowe, for coming out, you and your wife, and we appreciate you taking the time and blessing our meeting. All right, moving along here to our special recognitions, we have the B H S F F A poultry team state competition. Our presenter here is Rainey Ellis, Director of College, Career, and Military Readiness. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and Board. We had two students that were going to be here, but it doesn't look like they made it. I'm just very pleased to announce that these four students made it to state for F F A poultry judging team. If you've never seen that or experienced that, I...
Oh, you are here.
Come on up, yes.
I'm so glad you're here. This is Isabella.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, we weren't able to recognize them in May. They were having their F F A banquet that night, but I just want to recognize them for their hard work and dedication. According to their sponsor, this is the first time we've ever been to state specifically for poultry judging with our F F A team, so, great job.
Thank you.
Isabella, senior, junior?
I'm gonna be a senior.
Gonna be a senior, okay, awesome. So, when you go to state again and come back and you come here for recognition, we want to see a demonstration on how this is done, all right? I guarantee it'll be the first time that's happened in Bastrop I S D, so...
She's like, what does he talk about?
And I'm serious, we're gonna see how all that works, so, congratulations. All right, moving along to community and business partners, as well as Business Partners of the Year and as well as Community Partner of the Year, Karen Trevino, our Director of Community Relations.
Good evening. Thank you, President Munchink, Mr. Edwards, and the Board for allowing me this opportunity to recognize our business and community partners. I'd like to start off with some community partners. These people, these organizations have worked to enhance and enrich our school district over the past year. And so, we have Ascension Seaton Hospital, who has, they have worked with our P Tech Department and have provided professionals to come into the schools and also given our students opportunities to go to their facilities to have firsthand experience. We've got the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and their We Believe in B I S D, which I know I've spoken of before, that they pay visits to all of our campuses throughout the year, as well as our service center, our police department, and our special programs to let them know how much they're appreciated. Bastrop County Cares, who enriches not only our community but our schools. Most recently, they are embarking on a mental health initiative where they'll be coming into some of our school programming, our summer programming and after-school programming to work with kids. Of course, our Education Foundation, which we know does wonderful work, and then the Children's Advocacy Center, that are not only a wonderful partner with us for Springfest, but also provide services in cooperation with our police department for children in need. And so, if we have representatives from those organizations, I'd like to invite them to come up now to receive a certificate and for a photo.
We can do it as a group, let's do it as a group.
If the other board members would like to join.
Chris.
We need to get our community partners.
Most of these partners listed here have been an integral part of our Back to School Bash. I know our board members have often, have been at that event, and so you've seen a lot of these businesses at that event as well. I would like to mention Classic Bank, they have been here supporting us for the past several years. We also have School Specialty. They not only support at the Back to School Bash, but I know that I've seen Nicole at the Service Center bringing treats at different times of the year, and they're a great partner with us for furnishings. And then, the Sutton Law Firm, they are based out of Austin, but they've supported us and been one of our top sponsors at the Back to School Bash for the past, going on now three years. And so, all of these do amazing, amazing work for our school district. And if I have any representatives from these organizations, I'd like to invite you to come up now.
Thank you.
Each year, we ask our campuses, or we invite them to select a Community Partner of the Year for their campus. And this year, we have several businesses and organizations that were selected for different reasons. So, we have Phil Malli, which was selected by Bastrop High School. They provided gift cards for teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. I know that they also hosted Project Graduation for Bastrop High School's campus. A-plus Federal Credit Union was chosen by Bastrop Intermediate School. They were their adopted school partner this year and provided a meal for Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as anything else that the campus asked them to do. David Weekly Homes was the adopted school partner for Colony Oaks Elementary for the second year running, again, a very strong partner. Ally Medical was selected by Lost Pines Elementary as their, not only adopted school partner, but I know that they've also done some great work for the district with the Stop the Bleed Initiative. First National Bank was selected by two of our campuses, Mina Elementary, who was their adopted school partner, but also Red Rock Elementary, primarily for their financial literacy classes that they've done out there. We have the Central Texas Food Bank, who was selected by Cedar Creek Elementary. They have the Eagle Bites Food Pantry out there, so every week, our Cedar Creek and surrounding families are able to visit the food pantry and get fresh, frozen, and shelf-stable foods at that location. The Rotary Club of Bastrop County was selected by Emile Elementary. They are part of their adopted school initiative. We have Cedar Creek United Methodist Church, which was selected by Camino Real. They provided school supplies and hoodies for students this year. And finally, we have Connections Individual and Family Services. They were selected by Cedar Creek High School for providing counseling services for students. And so, we have special awards for them. I'd like to invite them to come up, to receive those awards, and we'll also do a group picture. We're probably gonna have to squish together, because I think almost all of them are here.
That's also him, right?
Yes.
Josh, Josh can do first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you take United?
Thank you.
Hey.
I don't like it, no.
You all go in the lobby, I'd like to get some pictures too.
And so, I would like to invite Chief Bunch to come up to recognize our, our Community Partner of the Year.
You know, first, when you meet Sheriff Cook, when I applied for this job years ago, I researched the county, and I didn't believe all the accolades that came with when you research the whole area. Sheriff Cook has been doing this job an unbelievably amount of years, but at a very high level. And one of the things that I found most impressive is not the fact that, yes, he was a Texas Ranger, not the fact that, yes, he was a chief of the Texas Rangers, but he is a bar card carrying attorney. He knows his job like nobody I've ever met before. And it's not that he rests on his accolades, he simply doesn't. He stays engaged, he stays active, he stays participative, but the most important thing that he does with his people is he leads them in partnership. And that, I can't express to him enough and to his agency of what they've meant to our agency. We just did training this last week with them. Any training that they provide, they provide to us. Anything that they do, they also offer us the same. And so, our collaborative working environment together, our dispatch that we use together, we communicate together, we talk together, we meet together, we eat lunch together periodically. And so, all those relationships are meant to do one thing, and what he does best, and that is take care of our community. And so, because of that, I found it an honor to be able to introduce him today and to recognize Bastrop County Sheriff's Department as a Community Partner of the Year.
Yes, sir.
Y'all know why I like Chief Bunch now, don't you?
And finally, I would like to invite Raina Ellis up. She is our Director of Career and...
College and Career.
Thank you, College and Career Readiness, and to present our award for Business Partner of the Year.
T C S Mechanic, or, excuse me, T C S, Texas Critical Systems, has been a dedicated and valued partner for our P Tech program since its first days. They play a vital role in supporting both our C T E programs and our Advanced Manufacturing Academy. From hosting student interns and offering meaningful work-based learning experiences to actively participating annually in our Youth Career Day, they constantly show up and say, "How can we help?" Tim Kimbrough and his team, specifically Megan Gandy, have gone above and beyond in their support. They've all, excuse me, they've not only facilitated internships and pursued workforce grants, but they have also shown up wholeheartedly at community events. I was especially touched by their generosity and presence at Bastrop County Livestock Show and the Sportsman's Banquet this spring, an example of their deep commitment to our students beyond the classroom. We want to thank them for their ongoing partnership as we work to ensure our students are college and career ready.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. I'd like to add to that, all these folks you see walking out to go take a picture are also very supportive of the Bastrop Education Foundation and the Sportsman's Banquet, and so there's just a lot of other ways, and we really do appreciate it. So, thank you for everything you do, we appreciate it. All right, this time, we'll move into our open forum. The Board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees, individuals or groups representing who have signed up, may speak, focusing on public education topics. Please note, the Board cannot discuss or act upon issues not listed on the agenda. The purpose of the open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed in the appropriate time. All right, and at this time, we do have one speaker, Mel Cooper. Come on up, and we'll have three minutes.
Oh, mine'll be short. I gotta be honest, given, given how wonderful that was, I was just gonna share some information, make some requests. I'll do it next time. That was, I don't wanna damage this wonderful, wonderful presentation you guys just had. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will conclude our open forum. This time, we're gonna move into two public hearings. We'll move into one of them at a time, the public hearing on proposed application for Optional Flex School Day Program for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. A is Optional Flexible School Day Program Report, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. B will be Consider Approval to Submit Application for Optional Flexible School Day Program, O F S D P, for eligible students for two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six. Raina Ellis is our Director of College and Career and Military Readiness. Again, this is a public hearing. I will take questions from the Board and audience after the presentation.
So, looking at our Optional Flexible School Day Program, Genesis High School serves as our alternative high school that hosts our O F S D P. The goal is simple, to graduate students. We want to ensure that every student that comes through our system graduates. So, we do have to apply annually to T E A for, for this type of School Day program, and as a part of that, we are required to have this hearing. Eligibility for a student, I've listed the five that are required, or not required. One of the five is required there, and typically, our, our candidates for Genesis are at risk of dropping out of school, as defined by Texas Education Code. And then, attendance and lack of credits is typically another reason our students will be a candidate for Genesis. There are other reasons there too, so along with the one of those, they also have to have an agreement in writing. If they're eighteen years of age or older, they can sign, otherwise, their parent does have to sign. So, our identification process, we go through, we have local procedures that we go through when we are recommending or students come and seek out information if they're potentially at risk of dropping out. So, they have to be defined as at risk. They then meet with their counselor and an administrator to discuss what Genesis High School programming looks like, to include the hours of flexibility. Students must secure rental, written parental permission, again, if they're under eighteen. And then, we analyze their transcript and attendance data, and then approval is given by the designated administrator. At that time, they have an intake appointment at Genesis High School where all of that information is reviewed. So, some really big celebrations for twenty-four, twenty-five, looking at this data. Very happy to report, and actually, this is preliminary data, our numbers have actually gone up. Our number of graduates went up by twenty-four graduates this year. We had increased enrollment by twenty-nine students, and we had an increase of credits. So, total enrollment for Genesis High School this year was three hundred and nineteen students. They earned one thousand nine hundred and two credits. Again, we graduated two hundred and forty-two. Withdrawn, just is the code that would be used as our lever code, we had thirty-seven of those students withdrawn. We have forty returning, meaning they didn't complete all of their stuff, so they'll be coming back. And then, we had about thirty students transfer out of Genesis. Our schedule is Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four o'clock contact hours. Our staffing, Genesis High School shares the building with Circa, so we have seven and a half teachers there to include all of our core academics, along with our C T E and Special Education certified teachers. Again, they share a counselor, nurse, principal, and assistant principal with Circa, and then, we ensure that students receive those special program services, counseling, and pregnancy-related service as needed. So, on the application, we as a district agree to administer mandatory assessments, such as the STAR test, to ensure all of our instructional materials and facilities are comparable, to ensure that students participating will not be isolated from other academic and vocational programs, that we ensure that they will be, get counseling, especially in college and career counseling, and then, we provide certified faculty. We also agree that we abide by our attendance policy. We also, if students are not attending, we will file truancy charges if appropriate. We track number of minutes students receive instruction each day, and that is, as it's applicable in our Student Accounting Handbook. We have to comply with the requirements established by T E A. We do not discriminate, and we prohibit a student from participating in U I L if they are not meeting those eligibility requirements, which typically would be number of high school credits based on grade level. So, with that, thank you, and I will take questions at this time.
Any questions from the Board first? All right, any questions from the public? If you do have a question, we'd ask you, please come to the podium. All right, Ms. Ellis, thank you very much, we appreciate it. This will conclude our public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request to submit an application for the Optional Flexible School Day Program for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving along to our second public hearing. On the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget, this is a public hearing for that two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. We'll also consider approval and adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget for general debt services and food services, and also consider approval of that two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan. With us tonight is our fabulous Chief Financial Officer, Mike White, which has been busy and definitely smiling since we got a little money from the state.
Sure. I gotta get that on my business card. Okay, so this is the culmination of almost six months of work, and so, we're gonna be talking about the, the final steps here, the, the last chance for discussion, questions, and a review of our budget before approval. So, we talked a lot about legislative updates, and we did wrap that up in early June. You can see here, it was, it was a great session, Texas, the economy in Texas is still doing well. The priority for the legislators was teacher raises and vouchers this session. So, those were both priorities of the governor, and both made it home. Some other allocations highlighted here, just some highlights, Special Education, some other funding for additional costs that we face, and then, school safety continues to be a priority. So, while the governor has until the twenty-second, all the significant bills related to school finance at this point, I think have been signed, so I'm not anticipating any issues there. Just a little bit of perspective on the last slide, because when you hear eight-point-five billion dollars, it seems like a, like a windfall, especially for some of those programs of need that we have. I thought that this was interesting in that even with the doubling of the safety allotment roughly to seven-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, we currently spend about three million dollars, so it's, it's definitely a priority for the Board as well. Special education going up to fourteen-point-five, we spend over seventeen locally, and then, in terms of the money set aside, the forty-five dollars per student they gave for non-teacher, non-admin raises, that number proposed due tonight is over two million dollars. So, those are priorities for us as well, right? And our needs still exist, still exceed our, our resources currently. So, it's a good day, you know, and not quite great, but we're still very, you know, very happy. It's definitely great for our teachers and staff in the district. So, the twenty-five-hundred-dollar raise for teachers with three and four years' experience was approved, five thousand for those with five years of experience going into the fall. They did provide some clarification since last week, so I felt like that was, you know, this is kind of breaking news. It's not fully fleshed out yet, but there was a small F A Q that was released and some guidance, because at the time, if you were... Because at the time, if you recall, we weren't sure how they defined a teacher, right? Is that a certified teacher? Is that a long-term sub, a par plus? Is that somebody that has a teaching certification now in a different role? Lots of questions like that. So, they came back and defined it as someone serving the teaching capacity at least .5 FTE when we go to report on our fall PMS submission. So, that's helpful. We know what that looks like. They call it a O-87, is that role ID. And so, that doesn't mean that you have to be certified. So, that includes more of our employees. We have a number that are on that pathway as part of our programs. And they did tell us how it would work financially. Of course, I was curious, anytime they give us funding with a certain allocation, how do we, you know, how do they get the data they need to determine what our number is, right? They have an estimate, but it's not real. You know, so they're gonna use last year's number of those teachers and then use that estimate like they do so many things. And then, later on, when we have the real data, they're gonna settle up with us. So, basically, it's gonna work very much in line with the way we get all our funding for kids. So, no additional reporting above and beyond, very simple and pretty seamless. So, I'm happy to report that. These are the highlights in the realm of school finance that I thought were noteworthy, that I think impact us. The homestead exemption, which is signed, going from 100,000 to 140,000. You'll note that that, of course, is based on voter approval this fall, which I assume will be approved. I haven't met anybody voting no to get their taxes lowered. But HB9, the business personal property, that BPP, $250,000. That was something that the legislators did for business owners, because there's been a lot of relief for homeowners, not so much for taxpayers, that own businesses and have that kind of taxation. So, that's significant for them. Both those categories were, you know, more or less to be held harmless. And so, they funded that in the budget. And the NAF rate, just an interesting wrinkle there. In the future, we want to go to defees debt, which is something we've done strategically to pay off higher interest debt in the past, requires 60% board approval. So, something to note moving forward. So, we talked throughout the budget process about breaking into, what are the things we have to do? What are the things we'd like to do, right? Because at the time, you recall, even a month ago, we didn't know if we'd get any additional resources. So, priority, first of all, opening Adelton Elementary. That was, you know, that's 20 staff. That's, you know, you gotta heat it, clean it, cool it, those kind of things, insure it. So, that's something we're doing so that we can launch successfully here in August. And then, a conversion of the intermediate schools to middle schools. And so, the reality of that and the staffing changes and all the things that go along with that. These are some identified priorities, the highest levels. Taking care of our pay, the pay for our staff is always, you know, front of mind for the board and superintendent. Elementary student supports, we talked about the impact of MTSS. You know, when we had some budget challenges last year, we had some other reductions. Those, adding those back and getting those second ACPs at those two campuses was a priority. Special education, always, as our population grows, including those kids with highest needs. Making sure we take care of those needs. HR, as we continue to grow. School safety, we talked about that a little bit. And then, we had some of the Vills Grant-supported positions. I think we presented a couple of months ago about those. And then, we wanted to touch upon the non-payroll campus allocations, right? The discretionary funds that campuses have to work with. That was something that we talked about going back to March, looking to do for equity and just because of the cost to operate those campuses. So, here's, I'll lead right into that. One of the things we were able to do is take, our methodology before was, over the years, it kind of gotten a little off-center. The range for our elementaries was from $74 to $95 per student, and the secondary one, $17 to $132. So, moving to more of a standardized allocation, which we detail below. I won't read it all, but you can see that the biggest takeaway is that it takes in to account that certain campuses have different populations of students, right? And have different challenges. So, none of our campuses will gain funding. Nobody loses funding. This is not, this is all a positive thing. So, and we like, really like the way that turned out, and I think it'll be very popular. I think it was also something the board was in favor of as well. So, that was able to be included in the budget. And then, compensation, this was our biggest priority coming out of, as we entered the end of the session, is we knew teacher pay was a priority. And so, we talked about those 2,500, $5,000 raises. But with the additional funding we had, we know that we've struggled at times with the lack of funding to take care of especially those lowest-paid employees that work so hard. So, you can, I'm gonna lead off with that. Support staff in pairs, increased by 5%. So, that, very proud of being part of that process. That was a priority. And then, we had to, even though we didn't get the state subsidy there with those one- and two-year teachers, those younger returning teachers that haven't quite got to that level, that was a priority for us. So, that's 3.5%. And then, increasing our teacher, starting teacher pay from 56,000 up to 57,750. So, and then, of course, administration is left, and that would be 3%. So, really, this includes all employees, right? So, this was a good day. This is definitely a positive development and as a result of the additional funding. Here's a couple examples, you know, what a year-three teacher it looks like, what the impact on them on a monthly basis can look like. At that $2,500 a year, you're talking $208 per month. A more experienced teacher, that's almost a little over $400 a month. So, definitely a very positive development, and that being around just under 8.8%, which is the maximum there. So, ranging from 4.4 to 8.8, that's definitely a great year in terms of taking care of our classroom teachers. And teaching assistance at 5% being $1,284 a year, a little over $100 a month for those folks. We talked about early June, the TRS active care, the insurance rates would be released. Wanted to follow back up on that. I think it's important to note that the state did fund, did subsidize that rate a little bit and buy down the increase, if you will. There's years we've seen 15% plus increases. So, all the plans, except for active care, which is an old grandfather plan, the current active plans, 8.75%. So, while I prefer no increase, the reality is, we were still happy. That was a positive development for our staff. So, for the employee-only plan, you're looking at about $20 per check. So, that was important to note. And now, we're getting to where the rubber meets the road here, the general fund budget. We are presenting a balanced budget to you tonight. We are having to project a little bit on the tax rate and what the balance between local tax collections and state revenue is gonna look like. I'm gonna touch upon that a little bit more in another slide. But the balance between those, you know, there's interplay there in the way school districts are funded. So, as our, if that compression, or the tax, homestead exemption goes up, local taxes would then go down, state revenue would then go up. But it all comes out in the wash, in the formula. So, you might see that rate go down, not going to go up at this point. The child nutrition budget, we talked about this last week a little bit. But right now, this is somewhat of a holding pattern as we figure out and we ramp up to take over July 1st. Hiring staff, we have a director I'll introduce here in a minute. And, you know, determining what that looks like. We haven't operated that program for a number of years. So, I didn't want to, I really wanted to focus on coming back to you in August when we had a better idea of all the actual salaries and all the actual expenses and revenues, and just revise that budget once we're done with the transition.
Yeah, and for the audience, we were outsourcing food services for years and just rotating through vendors. We're bringing it back in-house. So, there'll be BISD employees and so.
Yes, sir. That's a good point. This is a transitionary period for us. This is, we're last two weeks under our contract with Tahoe, who's been a good partner here the last few years. And then, our last board-approved fund, debt service fund. This is how we paid service our debt. You can see here, and we will touch upon this a little bit when we have our financial advisor present here in a minute. This is using some of our reserves. We currently have reserves of $25 million to help weather the ups and downs, sometimes evaluation fluctuations, and try to steady that a little bit. And here's a great example of using that. We're gonna go ahead and preemptively move up the sale date of the remaining $89 million in authorization for the 2023 bonds. We were talking about doing that at early part of next year. If we sell and make a payment by August 31, we're gonna garner about $7 million in state funding for that bond series. That seemed like a great thing for our taxpayers. So, we went ahead, and this was something that Josh at BOK brought to the table and has been helping us with. And it goes hand-in-hand with what you see here. This is not a poor budget. This is a strategic use of our reserves for this first year. And then, we'll grow into that, the additional debt, right? All right, so here's the proposed revenue for those three sources and the proposed expenditures. I'm gonna jump to the expenditures because the two funds, like I said, are balanced. So, it's the same numbers. And then, of course, we have the use of fund balance for debt service, strategic use of that. So, I'll pause there. I know this is an important part of what we're asking you to take action on tonight. So, any questions about the proposed budgets?
I had a question about the child nutrition. The number that we're being presented tonight, will that go down next year after we onboard and take over?
Right now, I'm more or less holding it constant. Their operation only guaranteed us a small net, I think it was $200,000 net. So, more or less, we're taking on all the same employees at their current pay rates. It's gonna look, we order the same food. So, a lot of the operation will be so similar that our current budget was the best basis for us for now, until we have a better. But, you know, it might be low, because I don't know that we, you know, on the revenue side, as we have more meals and we, you know, how we start to get a better handle on that. I was gonna defer that to our new director with her experience. I wanted her to kind of roll up her sleeves and work with me on that after she came onboard. And so, that's something we're gonna come back and give you real numbers. But for now, it's an estimate.
Yeah, and trustee Seacase, I think that's important, because those are some discussions that I had with Mr. Edwards. If we're not bringing it in-house to save money. The topper really came in and offered fresh food. Fender we had before was prepackaged and some different concepts. Instead of styrofoam trays that break in half, we got, you know, fiberglass or my plastic, whatever they are, and different things like that. So, just the little things that make a big difference. But quality was really important. And then, also, in some of our rule, campuses for the teachers as well and the staff have an option, because there's not a bunch of, there's not Chick-fil-A across the street. And so, anyways, but definitely make that part of the culture at that campus and something we should be proud of.
Yeah, and you recall the driving, the recommendation that we made to the board was centered around more control. When we took over facilities and operations, after we got, you know, through that transitionary period, we found it was a pretty successful transition. There's a lot of advantages to that. And so, we've been through a lot of providers over the years. It's kind of a tricky process that the TDA makes us go through there. So, definitely not a reflection on our partner. It was more a reflection on our, I guess, our priorities and some of the things we wanted to do locally. And we just thought it was the best choice moving forward. So, hopefully, also fruitful, so.
I've got.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got about four questions for you. Back on the increases, the 2,500, $5,000, those are permanent, correct? That's not gonna be a stop.
Yes, ma'am.
Those increases will continue.
The teacher raises are stipulated as permanent raises. So, I would infer from that that they're committed to funding them into perpetuity.
Okay. And I know I asked this last week, and I have a follow-up, because I appreciate the answers. I was kind of threw out the, I guess, the option of taking some positions from the curriculum and instruction and the Special Education Department up in the central administration. Because, and then putting, permanently relocating the position, don't change the salary. That's not a promotion, just permanently putting them down to the local levels, to the campuses. Because it's my understanding that campuses are needing, when I say bodies, they're needing some assistance, some additional resources so that they can handle any type of student behavioral problems. I know part of the answer, and I thank you for that. I guess I would rebut that with saying, well, if they're down in the campuses three to five days a week, keep them down there. It's an option. I'm just trying to think outside the box in order to give campuses the support they need. And I'm hearing the money's great, but they're really needing bodies. For instance, the para-professionals. I'm now just getting into those, understanding what they are. But my understanding is, they're kind of a jack-of-all-trade, and they're being pulled into the different directions, which is, you know, that's okay. But it just seems like more bodies, more people to help down there remembering our mission as, you know, their future is our focus. And if there's multiple children who are having behavior issues, and you're pulling the principal, and you're pulling the assistant, and then, you're putting the para-professional in someplace. Anyway, and then, you're just saying that we're gonna hire 11 more special ed folks. Just an option. Don't close it down, but, you know.
Yeah, what I, just if I can, I'd like to defer this comment to Mr. Edwards for him to get back to the board. This doesn't change the budget here and our line item. See, it's a good request, and from what I understand about the question is there's some different models of how that can be done. And so, Mr. Edwards, if you would review the model, see if it's still effective in regards to Ms., Armstrong, I'm sorry. You know, thoughts and get back to the board on your recommendation. I sure would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I just want to get it there, because it's administrative, right? Okay.
Boy, you got saved on that one. I do have another one on the para. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna defer to him. I'm just kidding. I kinda like how that's going, so.
And this might be something, on the definition of your teacher. I think it said in the classroom, yeah, capacity of .5.
Yeah, this is the language TEA put out in the FAQ, serving the teaching capacity.
Okay.
Is how they explain it.
My understanding, and I'm just hitting the surface of it, but my understanding is, will para-professionals ever be considered teachers? And if so, will their salaries, you know, increase? Or will they be paid comparable to a teacher? Maybe they are not certified, but we have uncertified teachers. How's that gonna work?
I'll answer that partially. And I think we're gonna, there's a good chance, when we talk about the comp plan here in a second, to kind of talk about the pay levels and how those, some of our grow-your-own programs work. I know there is a pathway. So, in terms of, could they ever get there? They could. You know, there is some, there are some requirements that I'm gonna punt a little bit on. I, my understanding is, it's a combination of getting college hours and then getting certified, going through our DOI program. Our plan talks to that process a little bit. But in terms of the specifics, I'm out of my depth a little, if you can notice.
I'm scratching the surface myself, yes.
Yes, there is a way that they can get there, to the extent that they meet the criteria to report them the way that TA defines.
If they're actually teaching.
They're actually teaching, and yes. And it does state that they don't have to be certified to necessarily earn it. And it doesn't have to be a traditional teacher. I mean, there's some pull-out teachers and folks that are interventionists or other folks that meet that PMS definition, like ESL and other small groups. If we report them as O-87 legally, in accordance with their rules, then they qualify. Now, we've only got about 10 FAQ questions released so far. We need about 100, because we have all kinds of questions about that kind of, that same line of thinking. Like, because everybody's gonna have situations. And the timing of when they become, they meet that threshold. And maybe they've met it, and now they're in a different role, and then they go back. How many years, what kind of years count? I've got lots of questions. We're all trying to be patient. We're happy that we got this guidance this week, because it answers some of the bigger questions. But we're gonna have to report back on all the situational aspects, because I'm sure those employees are very interested in that pathway. And I think it's a great thing to, something to strive for. You know, we want to get those folks all the way through that process to where they meet that standard as well. So, if you let me report back as we get more information, I would appreciate it.
So, that would be something that each campus would have to monitor their para-professionals as, you know, if they're. as, you know, if they're substituting for a teacher or.
It wouldn't be subs, but I think it would be probably more human resources, you know, making sure, because their running point, that's my understanding, they're in charge of making sure that all those aspects are, you know, all their credentials and all their credit for their hours and all those things in our DOI program are monitored, and then they work in conjunction with finance and PMS to submit that data accurately every fall. So we're doing the same things we've always done, but now it's a spotlight shown, that's shown on it, and we got a lot of questions. So I assure you, everybody that we can get there, you know, in accordance with the guidelines, we want to take care of our staff, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are you okay?
Just a quick, any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Tony, just saying, can you come to the podium, please? It's just about the microphone recording.
I could repeat her question. I could repeat it.
Do I? Here we go.
I just wanted to know if librarians and counselors were included in that? When you said you report as what, O-eight-seven? Were they, are librarians and counselors also included?
No, ma'am.
No, okay.
No. Now, this, the legislative session turned its attention specifically to teachers for that, and they defined it specifically. The House had a version that was a little bit more encompassing to teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, I think, but, you know, where we ended up was teachers specifically. And that's why we made such a priority to take care of the rest of the staff as well.
So you understand, though, they are getting a raise, it's just not that five thousand or that twenty-five hundred. Okay, yes. I saw you looking, so, yes, they're getting a raise. We, you know, we carved them out. They didn't fit the definition, so we made sure that we took care of them in compensation.
Yes.
Mike, I just have one quick follow-up question on the campus budgets. You, thank you for, by the way, thank you for the clarification, because I know I emailed you trying to sort that out, but I just wanted to make sure that, I know there is an enrollment number that you use to, for each campus, but as those enrollments, the true ones come in, we will true those campus budgets up.
And I've communicated that to principals, that after October, and we have snapshot numbers, we're going to come back. If you've grown more than we estimated, or, well, really, the demographer estimated, then we're going to adjust that up, but if you came in lower, we're not going to adjust it down.
Okay.
I bet some folks, some places where it worked both ways, you know, but we gave them a hundred percent of their funds, we didn't do a holdback, and so I felt like giving them access, using this model as soon as possible was the best thing to do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, I think we were here, and I'm near the end here. Just want to give a few, highlight a few of the steps left. Of course, after adoption tonight, that legally required deadline, June thirtieth, would be handled, and then we have certified values released late July. We have TA releasing our tier-one tax rate that I referred to in early August, and then we're going to come back and both propose a rate, publish if needed, and then adopt in September. So that is the budget presentation for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Any further, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we're also going to consider the approval of the compensation plan. Is that what we just discussed also, or is that something?
We have that as a, the next presentation, I think we're going to approve the budget and then move into the compensation plan.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, from the public? If not, that'll conclude our public hearing, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion about adopting the twenty-two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget for general debt service, food service as presented.
I move to approve and adopt the twenty-two thousand twenty-five, twenty-two thousand twenty-six budget for general debt service and food service as presented.
Well, a motion is second. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. Moving on to our next motion there, to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six compensation plan. I'll entertain a motion.
I appreciate the spirit.
So, so, so we're back into the public hearing, correct?
No, only the budget requires a public hearing.
Only the budget, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir. While it does kind of roll up under the budget, because all of these things are in that budget you just approved, wanted to, we're required to approve the comp plan and all the different rates and types of pay, all the schedules annually, so this is our chance to highlight a few things. We talked about the increases for staff, and I do want to point out this, we're still using midpoint raises, using the TASB model of mid and max there. The teacher raises, with the teachers' experience can range anywhere from four-point-four to eight-point-eight. Took care of those teachers that had one to two years' experience but didn't qualify for the TA funding, and of course, raised our starting teacher pay up a little bit less than that amount to make that more competitive, and then we had a three percent midpoint increase for administrators. Very high-level presentation. You have the entire comp plan, I didn't want to just sit there and go through the entire thing, but I opened out any questions you have. Also have Diana Green here, in case you have any specific questions for her, if needed, we can go through it together.
This might be a question for Diana, but is this going to be beneficial to get us all the teachers we need?
I hope so. I believe that it's a good starting point. I think that state raises are going to be much needed. I'm sorry, you probably can't even see me, but I do think it'll go a long way come up. Is there any other questions?
I just had a question, and we kind of touched on it at SLI, but if you have a teacher who was a paraprofessional for two years and then moved into a teaching position for her third year, would she qualify for the twenty-five hundred dollar raise, or would she still?
Really good question. That's one of the questions we have for TA, because, again, it uses one of the data elements that we submit to in the fall, a year's creditable service. Well, that's a question I asked, you know, around our table this morning. That's the kind of guidance we need, you know, because people in that situation are going to have that question.
Right.
It doesn't impact everyone, but I would, I think so, is my, is my hope, but, I mean, that's, at face value, it appears that they don't seem to make a distinction, but I'd like that spilled out, and I think by the, you know, if this goes anywhere, you know, like in House Bill Three, a few sessions back, the FAQ at the end was a hundred questions. You know, we're at ten right now, so as these things come up, they do a good job of following up, releasing guidance on every aspect of this, and it might be worth reporting back as those changes happen to the board, so you kind of are in the loop, but that's our hope, for sure.
So, Armstrong?
Yeah, I've got, and I think it goes along with what Kelly was saying, but clarification, the uncertified teachers that are teaching now, they're getting the teacher's salary, correct? Not the paraprofessionals. Now, I want to uncertify teachers.
Yes.
Because they're teachers.
As long as they fall under our district of innovation plan, then yes, they would get, in the compensation plan, you'll see it's a tiered rate, it's not the full teacher pay, so it depends on whether they're degreed or not degreed, if they're in an ACP, an alternative certification program already, if they come in with a degree and they are not yet in a program, they have a rate, a different rate if they're already in a program. If they are already in a program, that is full teacher pay, but it's kind of a layered approach to try to get them as close to teacher pay, but also not giving full teacher pay so that it's more of an incentive to finish.
And I'm going to assume, again, once they finish, they get bumped up?
Correct. Yes.
Has the district thought about helping, assisting these teachers getting certified, paying something?
Absolutely. We have met with a couple of different programs that we hope to partner with to kind of speed that process up, but yes, absolutely, we are looking into different options. And part of what came up earlier, the paraprofessionals that are in a teacher vacancy in years past that traditionally was a long-term substitute, and as you know, you could long-term sub and then one day decide, you know, this isn't working out, or maybe I need benefits, and so we have paraprofessionals in a teacher vacancy making a little bit higher rate, but also doing teacher duties, but what we've asked principals and tasked them with is finding people that have been your really strong paraprofessionals, that you're ready to grow into a teacher, and maybe they don't have the credit hours or requirements, and so then they move up into a DOI, and so it's kind of a layered grow-your-own plan.
And hopefully, a little financial assistance, because, I mean, we saw the paraprofessional salaries, and then to go to college online or in person is, could be cost prohibitive.
We refer to that group that are in teacher vacancies as para-plus, and they're on the DOI under the comp plan, but it is a higher rate than a traditional para, because they are doing a teacher job, and we understand that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. White? All right, there are none. Fantastic. This time, I will now entertain a motion for the compensation plan for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
I move to approve the twenty-two thousand twenty-five, twenty-two thousand twenty-six compensation plan as presented.
Well, a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate all your hard work and your team as well. I know this is a team effort.
Yes, Renee Wingard, Chris Haywater, big part of everything I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move along to the superintendent's report, which will be a financial report. We'll consider adopting of an order authorizing the issuance, or the issue of Bastrop Independent School District's unlimited tax school-building bonds in one or more series, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the award of the sale thereof in accordance with this specified parameters, and enacting other provisions related thereto. Our presenter here tonight is Josh McLaughlin with BOK Financial Securities. Josh, welcome, and if you could please explain that layman's terms to everybody what I just read, please.
Well, first of all, good evening, Mr. Edwards, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here. In terms of that long legal language, I'm going to point to the two lawyers over there who write it.
Thank you.
That keeps you all legal and ready for this particular bond sale. What's our presentation? There we go. Everybody can breathe you the sigh of relief now. And generally, you know, this is where I lose half the public anyways, when I talk about bonds. So, Mr. White already alluded to a lot of what I'm going to talk about, so I will try to be relatively brief there, and please stop me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But before we talk about this upcoming bond sale, I always like to talk about and remind the public how the district manages its debt portfolio. When the district sells debt, it does not put its head in the sand and wait for the bond's payments to pay off over a thirty-year bond. It actively manages its portfolio either through refinancing bonds at a lower interest rate, should conditions allow, or prepaying bonds prior to final maturity as your values increase. By doing that, the district has essentially saved taxpayers over forty-eight and a half million dollars in the last decade by actively managing its debt portfolio, so something to pat yourselves on the back for. In terms of tax rates, as you well know, every year you adopt two separate tax rates, your maintenance and operations, and your interest and sinking fund. We're going to focus on the INS tax rate tonight, because that is what's used to pay voter-approved bonds, including this upcoming bond sale. Your current rate is zero-point-four-oh-one. I always like, since I'm here, to point out that your total tax rate has gone down by more than thirty cents over the last five years, and again, you will see additional tax rate compression as you go into next year, so that tax rate will come down even more. As a quick reminder, the two thousand twenty-three bond program, voters within the district approved just over three hundred and twenty-one million. On May sixth, two thousand twenty-three, we have sold one series of bonds from that bond program totaling two hundred and thirty-two million at an all-in interest rate of four-point-three-seven percent. That leaves us just under eighty-nine-point-four million left to sell from this bond program. This gives you a look at the current debt profile as it stands right now. Typically, when we sell new bonds, we sell it over a thirty-year period. We're one year into this bond program, and that's why your bond payments are repaid over twenty-nine years. There are no bullet payments. We pay principal and interest off every single year. Your bonds are currently rated double-A-three by Moody's and double-A-minus by S&amp;P, but keep in mind, every time we sell bonds, we go to the state, and for fifteen-hundred dollars, we get the automatic triple-A rating through the permanent school fund guarantee, so excellent program there. The goals of this financing plan are the same what we presented back in two thousand twenty-three, which is pursuant to the voter education material. The INS tax rate of forty-point-one cents would not increase. We could sell all the bonds, and we're here tonight to tell you, you can sell your remaining bonds from that tax rate. Again, we want to maximize your debt profile, so you could take on additional debt in the future, should you need it for capital improvements, maintain a repayment period of thirty years or less, short-term projects, those are paid over the useful life. We are not taking in computer and financing over thirty years, because we all know it's not worth anything in thirty years. So over the useful life, we will put in some call features, so you can actively manage your debt portfolio again, and then we comply with the state rules regarding the fifty-cent test. This is a summary of the projects from the two thousand twenty-three bond program. The table on the left was the two hundred and thirty-two million that we sold back in August of two thousand twenty-three. The table on the right shows you what this eighty-nine-point-four million will be used Couple of recent legislative changes, Mr. White alluded to this earlier, Senate Bill Four, the two big things here, is going to increase the homestead exemption from a hundred to a hundred and forty thousand, but it also provided additional hold harmless funding. If your debt is issued by September first, you will qualify, or these bonds will qualify for the additional hold harmless funding. Originally, we also thought you had to make a bond payment by September first. You do not have to, according to the TA. We're still going to, because TA sometimes changed their minds, so we're going to be better safe than sorry when it comes to this. In terms of the financing plan, we are proposing to sell the remaining eighty-nine-point-four million this August, using fixed rates of interest. After the issuance of these bonds, the district will have no authorized but an issued debt outstanding, meaning if you want to sell future bonds, they will have to come from a future bond program subject to a future election.
So that's the question I had, so this is the last of the bonds?
Yes, sir.
We will be selling under, because we had two bond elections, and so this is the last?
This is the last one. In terms of tax rate impact, there will be none. You can sell the remaining bonds and stay within your forty-point-one cent INS tax rate, so no increase. We've assumed current market rates plus twenty-five basis points, because it will take us about six weeks to get everything prepared and ready to go to sell the bonds. In terms of the bond repayment, we are going to finance this over a twenty-eight-year period. Normally, we do thirty, but it was, this whole bond program was essentially thirty. So we're two years into it, again, short-term projects, finance those over the useful life. Given your INS fund balance, we are going to use a portion of that to help subsidize the tax rate only in year twenty-five, twenty-six, which is why you see a small deficit in your budget. In terms of other available revenues, these are included within your budgets, just under two million dollars a year. We have included that in the finance plan. In terms of state funding assistance, based upon your wealth per student, you will not qualify for IFA or EBA funding, but you will qualify for the hold harmless. And again, by selling these bonds and closing by September first, this series of bonds will also qualify for that same assistance, which we calculate to be about six-point-nine-seven million dollars over the life of the bond. So if the state wants to pay us additional seven million dollars, I say we move forward and try to take that. In terms of values, this is the biggest driver of what your tax rate is and how much bond capacity you can afford. Currently, your values are just under eight-point-one billion. For twenty-five, twenty-six, we anticipate that number to go down to roughly seven-point-four. The way we calculated that is we took the initial appraisal roll at the end of April from BCAD. We haircut that down to allow for some discrepancy of protest, and then we also adjusted it for the increase in the homestead exemption, something the appraisal district has not yet done. Based upon our figures, you'll lose about a half a billion dollars there. So again, that gets us to the seven-point-four number. That said, over the last ten years, on average, you've grown about four hundred and fifty million dollars a year, or just under ten percent. Last five years, six hundred and sixty million for purposes of this finance plan. We're only going your values two years. Again, we're only growing it two years, because we want future debt to pay for future bond programs, and given the growth within the district, I'm going to venture a guess, without the district telling me, sometime in the next two years, you might entertain another bond program. In terms of composition of your tax base, roughly half your tax base is from single-family residential, the other The other one is vacant lots. That tells us you have a lot of room to grow within the district, but that also means when they increase the homestead exemption, it's going to lower your tax base a little bit. In terms of new construction, you could see there the last five years, on average, you've grown roughly $420 million a year. So, we're a little, being a little conservative when we're only growing your values, $350 million a year for two years. You see that here, on average, the next two years, $350 million, which is roughly 4.6%, which is significantly below your five-year average. That said, based upon prevailing market conditions, we anticipate selling lease bonds at an all-in interest rate of 493. Again, that is less than 5%. We told voters at the time of the election, your net bond payments are about $166 million. We would reuse roughly $3.6 million of your existing fund balance. You could see how many bonds we're paying off in five, 10, and 15 years. And again, we would repay all these bonds in February of 2053 would be the final maturity. This is an eye exam, so I'm not going to pay a whole lot of attention to it. But if you look at the second to last column, your INS tax rate is at 40.1 cents. With the addition of these bonds, we anticipate it going to 40.1 cents. Thereafter, starting in '26, '27, you'll notice your tax rate can decline. That is where values come in better than anticipated. You can maintain that tax rate, prepay bonds prior to final maturity and save future interest costs while building future bond capacity. That is something the district has done in the past, and I would hope continues to do so in the future. After this series of bonds, you'll have roughly $446 million callable prior to final maturity. These bonds could either be refinanced at lower interest rates, should market conditions allow, or we could use these to prepay in your manager annual tax rate. What you have before you tonight is a parameters order. This would allow the district's administration to move forward with the sale of the bonds subject to these parameters. Unless every one of these parameters is achieved, we cannot move forward. Those parameters is we can sell no more than the $89.399 million. The interest rate cannot exceed 5.5. Final maturity cannot exceed February 15, 2053. And the order allows us a year to get this done, but the reality is, we're trying to get this done by the end of August to take advantage of that additional state funding assistance. This gives you a quick timetable. We're here tonight. We should be in a position by July 28th where we have everything wrapped up. That's obtaining the permanent school fund guarantee, obtaining the bond ratings, having an offering document out on the street. It also allows us to get the district's certified values on July 25th to incorporate that into the final finance plan so we know exactly what your bond payments need to be next year to set the correct tax rate. All that said is, we would sell shortly thereafter. We would close August 27th, at which time the district would receive its funds. I know I went through that relatively quickly. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. It's a lot of information, and you talk so fast. So, real quickly, the $7 million that we qualify from the state, so that's on repayment, what's the timing of that? So, how do we, when does that come?
So, the state will actually pay you on an annual basis over the life of the bonds. So, that $7 million is over the entire 28-year period that is outstanding.
Okay, and I apologize if you said that.
No, I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, if there are not any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the order authorizing the issuance of Bastrop Independent School District unlimited tax school building bonds as presented.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Josh, thank you for coming out and your team. We appreciate all the legal language. And, yes. And thank you again. We appreciate the help and guiding us through this.
It's our pleasure, and hopefully we'll come back with some good results.
Thank you. All right, moving along here to item B, Facilities and Operations Department Report, Child Nutrition Update. Our presenter again is Mike White, our Chief Financial Officer. I hope I instilled your thunder in your presentation by bringing it in-house, but...
No, we're good. Let's see. Wow. I'm going to wing it. Okay, there we go. Whoo!
Meeting is ended.
All right. So, you guys know that, as the board president mentioned, we have been working on this transition for several months, giving you guys updates on what that looks like. I wanted to come back and give you some highlights of what June, July, and August looked like. Of course, priority number one was hiring a great child nutrition director, and we have her in attendance. If you want to stand up, this is Rachel Talapour. She's our new child nutrition director. She comes to us with 15 years of experience leading in these departments, most recently with Tahoe and before that SFE. So, great, great hire for us. We're really excited about what she brings. And I'm going to present for her, and if, if she coughs over there, I must have said something wrong. I'm going to do my best here. So, we're going to continue with our summer feeding program. That's something that's ongoing that we do every summer at a number of campuses, making sure that's seamless. Now that we're going to be procuring food and really everything for this department, getting, you saw the co-ops that we're presenting, I think they're in the consent agenda. A big part of that is to procure food and be a part of those things, procure it legally. We need to finish our determining the staff we need. Now that we have a whole team of staff, what it looks, going to look a little different for us. So, you're talking about managers, assistant managers, cooks, chefs, nutritionists, those types of staff. And we're working with Rachel closely on, on figuring out what that looks like and getting those folks onboard. Then we're also looking at some of the technology systems, you know, that, that were the, the third parties, they were, you know, their point of sale and, and their menus and all those kind of things that drive every department, really. We need to get those systems to be our own. And so, get those launched, get all those contracts signed, and make sure that's seamless as well. And then we have a big onboarding milestone coming later this month to get all of the staff I mentioned, you know, all the cafeteria workers and managers and, and those kind of folks, many of, the large majority of which will be the same employees that currently have been serving us. Get them onboard. While it says June 26 is the major date, we also going to be doing some of that in July as we continue to post some of those key central office positions that provides oversight for the whole district. So, that will be ongoing the next couple of months. In July, we start meeting with staff, we start to work on our menus, you know, now that they're ours. And of course, Rachel will work with the dieticians on that. And then we come back and, and we talked about it a little, but to refine the budget, you know, right now, we're working off estimates for both the budget and the staff levels. So, once those folks come on, we determine whether where their pay was and what we can do for them, come back and, and possibly revise the comp plan. We'll do a budget amendment and then make sure in August that our kids are ready to be served great tasting nutritious meals. And I'm excited about that. I think it's going to be a great transition, and I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Yeah. The, are we going to be cooking in the, in the cafeterias? Is that something that we'll be doing?
Yes, ma'am. I think I can answer that one.
Cooking, cooking from scratch or...
Well...
Preparing the meals? We'll be preparing the meals?
We'll be preparing all the meals. I don't know how much scratch cooking, you know, will be done, but definitely not microwaving, was it prepackaged meals? That's, that's obviously not ideal. It doesn't taste good, it's not very nutritious. So, but I'm kind of relying on her to come back and I think her leadership, developing menus of great tasting food that are, you know, unique and exciting for kids, it's kind of what she excels at. So, I think that we're going to lean on her a little bit, you know, to, to bring that to the table, and it'll be different than Tahoe, but it'll also be, we think, really good.
You mentioned dieticians. Do we already have those onboard or is that something on contract?
We're working on that now. We have the job description developed. I think we have the job posting ready to go out and, is it posted yet? Is it posted? Okay. Breaking news, it is posted.
Will you, will you try to incorporate? I, I thought we have a culinary program here. Is that something we're going to still, I mean, seeing that we brought this in-house, is that something y'all are discussing for high school kids?
Rachel, it's coming up.
That's not Rachel, that's Rachel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. Great. So, we don't have culinary. We have like food service, like food production at Bastrop High School.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, are they, are y'all collaborating with that? Or is that two separate things?
Separate.
I think it was two separate things, mostly because you had a food service management company, but now that it's in-house, it's something we can definitely work together and create.
Look at, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're so early on, we're just focused on all the, all the folks and all the systems mostly at this point. Some of the programmatic stuff will come later, I think.
Those are good questions. To give the audience a little, little history, we, we had SFE, and we liked SFE until they sold and the company imploded, and the service didn't go well. And then you have TEA, which rides hard on this really hard, makes us go out to bid. And like this last time, just because we, anytime you add a campus, you got to go back out to, to bid. And Tahoe did a great job, brought a lot of great things. I know they made pizza from scratch and, you know, versus our prepackaged food from Airmark and things like that. So, I mean, all these things you hear about from the parents and the asking the kids and various student advisory panel and, and different things. And so, that, that was one thing we really encouraged, that if we make this move, this is not about saving money because this is a separate budget. And, you know, the money, the money is there. And then it gets into, you know, breakfast and lunch and summer programs and things like that. But I, but I remember even Tahoe working with Cedar Creek High School in regards to the greenhouse and things like that and growing some things, so I...
That'd be great.
Right.
You're right.
The whole idea will continue.
Awesome.
And expand them.
Is the, is the cost of the, I mean, for the students that do have to pay, is that cost going to go up?
I don't think we've made that decision yet. I don't want to...
No, your, your program is CEP, so all of the students currently...
So, I guess for the, the adult meals, we would have to set some of the...
Adult meals are priced, but student meals are still...
The free, oh, okay.
And that's why it's a separate budget that you're getting federal funds, right? And you can't try to save it and go use them somewhere else, right?
Yeah, it's a standalone fund. It's, it kind of, you know, it's a subsidiary of the district.
And, and the nice thing here is, is if there is some savings by running a really great program, we could use it for kitchen equipment, which is, needs to be replaced or...
We did that to screen the board-approved significant investment in our kitchens.
Right.
Using some of those reserves. And so, healthy fund balance, great, great financials. I don't anticipate, anticipate that changing, you know, with our participation, with CEP and the program we run and her history of leadership, I, I'm confident that financially it'd be fine, and I think it's going to be a great, great change. So, I just don't know as much about it as some of my peers, but, yeah, any questions related to, to child nutrition department's transition?
Any questions? This was a report, so there's no action needed. Thank you very much, Mr. White. We appreciate it. Move along to the curriculum report, Human Resource Report, and the Police Department Report, or, or offer information only. Are there any questions from the board on those, about those three reports?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Curriculum report, and again, thank you for answering this, but I just got a curiosity, that Diane Swinney Student Center Coaching Model, I kind of asked this was, you know, was this something, you scrapped the last one, coming up with the first one, but my understanding this, that two-day, where is it? Oh, man, Student Center Coaching Model. And then there was that Get Fast, Get Smart Fast model or something. What's the third one?
The third one is Gym Nights Coaching, but we will make that determination when Gym Night...
Gym?
Gym, like...
Gym, J-G-Y-M?
J-A-G-I-M, Gym Nights Coaching Model.
Okay, jewelry.
But that's a third one that'll come later that we'll make determinations when that happens. It's just to give them a toolbox of different coaching models to use.
The, that, that was so, I like that, they, the Get...
Get Better Faster?
Yeah, Get Better Faster. Um, I for one don't usually, it doesn't click sometimes real quick with me. What happens if it just doesn't click with the teacher?
That's why we have multiple coaching models to choose from so that we have different opportunities to address whatever support that they need to continue to improve on their instruction in their classroom.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And then the next one I have is for, I think it was for chief, on the Police Explorer Program.
Yes, what, what we're going to do is, is just like recently, the Sheriff's Department, we partnered with them when their junior police academy, which they held here. And so, we partnered with them. And so, for the Explorer Program, what we're trying to do is get kids engaged early that are especially in our criminal justice classes, give them an opportunity to see what this career looks like, what it is. Again, we all hear a variety of things about law enforcement is, but we get a chance for them to interact with us, see what it truly is, and hopefully get them engaged where they want to pursue this as a career.
How are you going to select the students? And what kind of li, I'm assuming you won't put them in harm's way, but what kind of liability is that opening up the school?
It's all done through the Boy Scouts, so insurance is done through the Boy Scouts. And so, it's, you know, it's not like we're, we're putting them in harm's way, they're not going to be out running the streets with the Sheriff's Department and all those kind of things. But what we are going to do is let them see what kind of training we do, let them experience some of that kind of realistic training, let them do mock traffic stops, do those kind of things that help them to see what this career is and how to stay safe when you do it, but also it's an enjoyable profession. You know, again, we have Sheriff Cook that's over here, that's done it for so many years. He's still a mentor to all of us that are, that are in the profession. So, what we're trying to do is lead that legacy that he's been and be a mentor to those kids as they grow up and want to look at doing this profession.
So, this will start and just kind of keep going, and you'll kind of evaluate it after a couple of years?
That's the plan, to start it in August. And again, we'll, we'll try to seek those out that show an interest in it. Again, that we, they need to understand what kind of life they need to, to live, the requirements of what it takes to do this profession, if you get in trouble, how that looks like and how that impacts the remainder of your opportunities in this career. And so, again, what we want to do is just expose them to it and hopefully get them involved in it at some point.
Thank you. And I, I want to throw out a couple of kudos for Karen, for the Bank Buddies and First National Bank. Given my profession is, the financial literacy, it's amazing how uninformed that some, especially the younger generation. So, when I saw that, I, awesome, kudos, awesome.
We're very excited about that program. We've got over 30 kids signed up for it.
Is that at the high school? No, because they said something about Red Rock Elementary.
It's elementary level, and we're holding that program this summer. So, it'll be four sessions. We've got some exciting speakers from the community that are coming to visit the kids.
Awesome.
So, it will be a great experience.
Make sure you hit the high school. They need to learn. You know, just because you put it on a credit card doesn't mean you have, you can't pay it, so...
I actually had a meeting with A+ this afternoon, and we are, we are looking at that for next year.
Kudos. Kudos. And I also, Dr. Morris, I know you're hard at getting the students to school, and I think you said they had a, I don't think he, she's here, is she? No, please pass it on to her because that was the McKinney Vento graduates. When I had to look at that program, that's a challenge. Those students really overcome a lot of obstacles to do that, so that, that was great. And I think the last one I have is for Ted, as far as safety drills, look at, he said what? Are, are just mandatory safety, I mean, what I grew up with was fire drills, and of course, that's different now. So, how are they conducted? How are you monitored? Posted by...
How much time do you have?
Ask Ashley.
So, the drills are, are outlined by TEA and Texas School Safety Center. Fire drills are still there. We do four per year, two per semester. There's an outline for, you know, the days of when we come back, first 10 days when we come back from the actual new calendar year. And then we have secure drills to wear. We don't come in or out of any exterior doors. You can continue business inside the school. You don't, you stay inside the school in case there's some police activity or something going on on the outside lockdown. That's the one, and I'm not going to get into all the specifics on these, but those But those are a, a drill that's required a couple of times per year. Uh, the hold, it's not required, but I, I still would like for, uh, our campuses to continue, just because it's a, it's, it's a good drill. Hold is you stay where you are. If we have an altercation in the hallway, they stay where they are. If we have a medical emergency and a cadet comes in to transport a, a student or a teacher, patient out of the building, then, uh, then there's no traffic. And then we have weather drills. Uh, so they're all outlined. Uh, I don't make up any of the, of the requirements. It's come, it comes from TEA, Texas School Safety Center. It gives us the guidance. I just upload those drills into Raptor and I give them the window. If it's, you know, one drill per semester, I put the dates in. One drill per year, I put the dates in. The assistant principals, uh, that's the safety, security, um, assistant principal at each campus, they go in and, and fix those dates. So where when they activate those drills with Raptor, they can activate the drill on their phone and it gives everyone a notification. Everyone a notification that is assigned to that school. And then, uh, there's, there's some campuses that we have that will practice and, and conduct more drills. I can go in and upload more if they want, you know, more practice in one area than others. Uh, and then after those drills, we, uh, we're working on, we're working really good to improve our after-action reviews, where we're conducting after-action review. Looking at what we, you know, successes, more importantly, uh, the improvements that, that we're continuing to enhance. And then we go back and fix those. So it's a, it's everything outlined by the Texas School Safety Center, inspected by TEA. They give us the guidance. I take it, kick it out to the campuses, train on the expectation standards and they conduct the drills.
Are they receptive? I mean, I, I'm assuming they are receptive.
Well, it doesn't really matter.
I don't think they have a choice.
Well, okay. Are they, are they usually a surprise?
They do, they do great.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I, the, uh, the administrators do really good. They, they continue to improve on those after-action reviews. Everything, yeah, it's, it's working really well. They have the expectations, they know what their improvements are. I don't know what each campus needs to do for each drill, but those campus administrators do and they, they're working really hard and they're doing a really good job. Same with our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that are teaching those drills inside the class, uh, inside the classroom. And, you know, they, they conduct the drills with the students. The administrators are overseeing it, but overall, great, great success.
They're not just going through the motions, in other words. I guess that's.
Yeah, we don't, we don't go through the motions anymore. We train to standard, not check the blocks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ted wrote a book, there you are, all right. Have to look that, look that up.
What she, what she's saying is Ted, Ted did write a legitimate child's book on school safety. And so, uh, and when you ask about how the schools look at it, our teachers, our principals, they wanna teach our kids, but they can't teach them unless they're safe. They want to keep their kids safe. And so, yes, they wanna do the drills. They wanna do them as, as set out, not only by what the law says, but they wanna do it because it's inside who they are. Protecting children is not just us, it's all of us.
Sounds like the board may need to read Ted's book.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. All right, as we move along here, uh, to the consent agenda, would, uh, any board member like to pull any consent agenda item for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving along to action items, uh, consider extension of a depository contract for First National Bank of Bastrop. Mike, you're back up again, you're busy tonight.
Getting my steps in.
Yes.
So, um, coming to you tonight to, um, recommend, um, extension of our current depository agreement with First National Bank. It's a partner we've had most of the last, oh, thirty-five years. Uh, I think originally, uh, their record showed nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and, and I think continuously since the early two thousands, uh, is what our records show. Um, TEA has a very regimented process, similar to, um, the food service bids we talked about. I mean, two thousand twenty-three, we went out to that process and, um, and had two responses and selected First National Bank, um, in that process. And they allow for, uh, three two-year extensions. This is the first opportunity to consider extending. And so, um, had discussions with, um, leadership at the bank and, um, had minor change that was listed there related to rates. Uh, the rate environment, it's a little different back then, a few years ago when rates were a, a few basis points, you know, then now they're closer to, to five. So, um, but other than that, it's pretty much the, um, relationship that we currently have and, and the services offered. And they've been a, a great partner, um, during my time and, uh, went above and beyond. So I come to you recommending, uh, that extension and I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. White? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the extension of the depository contract with First National Bank of Bastrop and authorize the board secretary to sign the extension as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to second. We are gonna vote a little different, so let's, we're gonna do a little exercise here, let's pay attention. It's brought to my attention that there will be three abstaining. So, uh, we need to, uh, that leaves, uh, four votes. And so, um, all in favor, raise your right hand. Got that noted, Noli, okay? Any opposed, raise your right hand? Okay, any abstaining, raise your right hand? Got that recorded? Thank you, Noli, appreciate it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White.
Appreciate it.
All right, um, information, um, items, um, only are, are board calendar enrollment, uh, T E C four-four-point-zero-three-three. Purchase cooperative fees report for, uh, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Single budget purposes, fifty thousand or more. And, uh, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six board, uh, meeting dates. Any questions on those for information only? All right, if there are none, now we're gonna move into our closed session. It is now seven oh-five P M. And the board will now convene and to close a meeting session to discuss the following items as allowed by Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Personnel matters. Uh, no voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result for discussion in the closed meeting session, uh, will take place after the board reconvenes in this room, uh, in the open meeting. Now we'll continue to go into closed session.
All right. The time now is 7:44 PM and we will resume back into open session. And at this time, we will discuss actions resulting from closed session. The BISD, the Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees received a notification and retirement letter from Superintendent Barry Edwards.
I move to accept the letter of retirement from Barry Edwards as Superintendent of Bastrop ISD and to authorize the Board President to execute the Superintendent's employment contract on behalf of the Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Barry, on behalf of this board, we would like to extend our gratitude to you and for your dedication of service to Bastrop ISD, your leadership vision and unwavering commitment to our students, which has always been number one, staff and community have left a lasting impact. We wish you all the best as you enter into a well-deserved retirement. So, from the bottom of our heart, thank you and it's been awesome. You're still around for a little longer.
Yes.
And there's a timeline and you'll be hearing more about that in the future. So, great. Is there any objections to adjourning this meeting?
No, but I would also like to add a personal note. I wanted to say thank you to Meredith publicly as well as your family that has supported you throughout your career. Thank you, Barry.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, if there's no objections to adjourning this meeting, meeting is adjourned.